Welcome to our first scheduled February city council meeting. I do call this meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise and face the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, would you also take a roll for us?
Ryan Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Deb Fenske?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
John Lockwood?
Here.
Gillian Peterson?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are no additional handouts tonight. Are there any items that council or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda, where we vote at the consent agenda on all the items with one motion, to the regular agenda where you would take those items separately? Anybody that would like to see any changes? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, and second by Hagan, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, again Sandy tells me, there's no additional handouts. Unless we want to change some things around, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some of the motion we approve?
Motion by Fenske, second by?
Second.
Hackett. To approve the regular agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Let's move on then, under number seven, we have, first thing under that tonight is public input. If there's anybody in the audience, or even council or staff, that would like to speak to the council about a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments due five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give?
I have one thing.
Okay.
On January 30th, I attended the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Seminar that they had in Appleton, or Nina. And Brennan, I'll have notes for you, I just have to type them. But excellent presentation, I would encourage everyone, if they have this again, or continuation of it, to go. It was all about strengthening communities, and what we can do to strengthen our neighborhoods. Lot of great ideas, and like I said Brennan, I'll give this to you, these are ideas to look for later. But very interesting information.
Thank you Deb, thank you for attending. Anything else for public input? Dave Pete?
I was remiss last meeting because of the crowd and the rush, but in reading the minutes from the, particularly in this case, the police report, I was impressed by the efforts of several of our police force during some hard times in December, and accidents and things, and it was in the chief's report, but I'd like to commend them too for their efforts, and thank them.
Awesome, yeah, thank you. Yeah, sometimes we see them in the reports, and it doesn't get out to the public, so Dave, thank you for doing that.
Thanks Dave, there's actually going to be an article in the paper this week about that too. But thank you.
And since we're not under negotiations right now, you can compliment. Sorry, no, we do appreciate it. Anybody else said anything? Okay, let's move on then to unfinished business. We have the development agreement with Russ Young Incorporated, and we're going to have, we all had seen this at the last meeting, but Henry, you want to just set us up again? I know the Youngs are here in the audience again tonight.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. The information starts on page 39 of your packet. As the mayor said, we discussed this last meeting in a workshop format, there was a number of questions asked. But essentially, where we're at with the Great Recession, and particularly, a number of our housing subdivisions, this is not unique. We're at a point where in the Russ Young Development off of Western Avenue, lots are right at $60,000 in development penalties alone, and really is going to make it prohibitive in the foreseeable future to get those developed. So the Youngs have come forward, staff, the mayor, city attorney, Brennan and I have met with them over the course of probably a couple months, this most recent effort, and came up with something that, as a group, we felt was workable, but you know, again, we're not forcibly recommending it, but felt that this was something that could work. I would like to boil it down, I think Barb Young probably said it best, we were tying the payment that they would make, totally $111,000, to kind of what the private subsidy was, the balance of the private subsidy that went to them, but she put in a little bit different terms that I think is equally relevant, is basically, they're offering about 33 cents on the dollar, 32 cents on the dollar of the penalties, because they're right at about $30,000, and they would offer to commit to building out six more units if the city council would be agreeable to discounting these penalties. The last thing I'll say, and I think they have to make the case in front of you, and not me or anyone else, is that we have an example of what happens if we just let the free market handle it. And that was a policy choice that was made, it was personally justifiable in the past, but Foxfire went to tax foreclosure, the county got those parcels back, and they sold for $6,000, $7,000, and we had a number of penalties on them, and didn't get a penny. So at least in this format, if it's something you can support, we're getting something back. And it helps the TIF districts to get that income coming in, this would be a TIF revenue, would have to be booked to TIF number four. So that's all I have to say, I don't know, you might have questions for the Mr. and Mrs. Young, I don't know.
Barb and Russ, do you have anything?
No.
That you would like to add to that? Okay. Anybody have any questions? Now that you had a couple of weeks to think about it. I think the only thing I would add to this, and I wasn't really thinking about this at the last meeting, but whatever your decision is, but if you do agree to this, I think that the property taxes, and there are some past due property taxes on these lots, I think part of that motion should be that those property taxes get paid in full. And we're talking, each lot is about, it's less than $200 per year, but we're talking five years' worth of property taxes, so we're talking somewhere around $5,000 that would need to be paid to the county. Now, understand, and Henry reminded me of this this afternoon too, the city has been paid in whole on that, the county does pay us, but as a good neighbor, we should attempt to at least get those taxes paid to the county, I believe.
I'd like to say to that, that's our intention.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you Barb. Yeah, if you were to look at, if you were to go on the county's website, which they've, the county's actually changed that this year, you can actually, not only just look at the parcel numbers, but you can also look at the owners of all the parcels in our county. You'll see that they have general property taxes, but then they have the special assessment. Well, that's what we're talking about tonight, is that the special assessment part of that would go away if they would, if you guys agree to this, and they would agree to fulfill that. So, Paul.
Mayor, I'm reading this amendment here, and they're agreeing to build six units by December 31st, 2021. If they don't, the penalties, approximately $240,000, go back on the tax rolls with the crude interest. Would the Youngs be willing to personally guarantee payment of those penalties if that goal is not met?
No, we would not, we won't do that.
Why not?
We don't feel there's a reason to it.
I personally guaranteed a lot of loans for my businesses, the banks make me do it.
Well, we've been negotiating since June, and we've come up with the things that we have, we've decided between us and the committee that they felt this was adequate, and we do too. And this is as far as we're willing to go.
Okay, I understand your intentions are probably good, and I'm not saying-
They are.
Yeah, I understand that, and I don't doubt that, but just as in 2004, your intentions were good, things didn't go the way you wanted, or the way we wanted. 2021's a long time away, and they may not go as you want, or we want again.
Well, quite frankly, we're going to build faster if we can. And if it would come to a point where we couldn't perform, what, if there's that much in penalties, they probably would be up to about $400,000 by then. Quite frankly, we wouldn't be able to do it. I think you have to look at the fact that we've already paid $100,000, we're paying another $111,000, we're committing to three buildings and an economy in an area where new construction is as stagnant as it could possibly be. So I think our intentions are right there, and I just, this is where Russ and I are right now, this is what we believe in, and we feel that we've given a lot. What's been realized in penalties and taxes is $366,000 so far. And the funds that were committed to that Villas project was in the area of, I believe, $331,000. And now you're going to get another $111,000, and that's where we are.
Well, originally you got $558,000 in value.
Well, part of that went through the, well, the streets, you know, and everything else. But, you know, I'll have to just say one thing about that, most municipalities, and I'm sure you're aware of this, are working with their developers. They feel that there's more to be gained, it's a common sense approach, by working with them, completing the projects, rather than gouging them with penalties that have no chance of getting paid by anyone. And you can see what's happened with the developers here. You've lost four of them already, and the penalties mean nothing, because it's not going to work, it doesn't work. You need somebody that's going to try and fight this housing recession that we've had for going on nine years. And it's a battle, it's going to be a hard goal, but we're committed to trying it and going forward. Otherwise, you wouldn't be getting $111,000, you know, it just-
But you're not willing to personally guarantee your performance on this?
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
You don't feel we need to, thank you.
So I read that, Paul, and I read that as, if the development agreement, if this doesn't work for them, then we're going to end up with the same situation we were with Foxfire, is what happens. So, you know, I mean, the agreement is, they're going to pay $111,000, they're going to get six units on there by 2021, or the penalties go back on. Well, the penalties aren't going to go back on, because it's going to end up in the county's hands, if they're not able to do it. I mean, that's basically how I read it, okay?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
I think the impression is being given here that if we don't agree to this, the city's going to be the only loser, and that's, I don't think that's true. You know, as a developer, if they default on this agreement, that's a pretty black, big black mark on their reputation and record. And so, yeah, the city loses for sure financially, but I think the Youngs stand to lose a reputation if they default on this agreement. So I think that's something we should be keeping in mind too.
Anybody else have any other comments? Again, we are in, at a council level, so if you feel comfortable, we are looking for some kind of motion tonight, whether you agree with it or not agree with it, we would like a motion one way or the other. If you're not prepared yet tonight, we can always put it off, but Deb?
Like I said at the last meeting, I appreciate the circumstance you're in, you want to spend your money here, we should be working with you. That being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this draft agreement of, is it January 16th? Ian, you want the back taxes to be paid?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Fenske, a second by Keeland, that we approve of the agreement that was drafted, and you're using January 16th as-
Well, that's Henry's memo.
Yeah, Henry's memo. The only thing that we are adding to that is to make sure that the property taxes, the current and prior property taxes are paid in full before this agreement goes in. Any discussion? This is a contractual agreement, so we'll have Sandy do a roll call vote for us.
Mayor, I just want to make one comment, this is a draft agreement, and before it's finalized, because it is contemplated that this will be recorded, we will be adding on some real estate description, so that it is a recordable document.
Okay.
Just so they're aware of that. This isn't exactly what it'll look like.
Okay.
Gets recorded.
And the Youngs are aware of that also, that it will, right? Okay.
Do you have something?
We won't.
Oh yes, we want to have our attorney review it, but that's, we've got 30 days, so we're, yeah.
Good. I would have thought you maybe would have done that already. Okay, Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
No.
Paul Mayo?
No.
John Lockwood?
No.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
And Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, three noes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, I'm sure that Mr. Hart and Henry will be contacting you shortly, so we can get this all taken care of.
I want to thank you all very much, we will try our best not to disappoint.
Thanks Russ, I'm sure you will. Okay, let's move on to the award of a bid for a skid steer loader. Am I missing something?
Yes, you missed the ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Fireworks.
All right, I'm sorry, let's go back one step here, we have ordinance number 0115, this is the first reading. John, do you want to just touch on that, John Hart, real quick?
Yeah, this is just an amendment to the current ordinance for fireworks displays, it had originally allowed fireworks displays the 4th of July, and winter celebration, which are conducted by the city, and it's just extended that to read, and any other sponsored, city-sponsored, public firework displays, so it's not limited to just those two annual items. And it would, pretty suppose that it would have to come back for the approval for city sponsorship, anything else besides.
Okay, awesome. So that will be on the next meeting, which will be the second reading, so we'll actually vote on that at the second meeting. Okay, let's move on then, to the skid steer loader bid.
Okay, item on your agenda, item 9B, award of bid for skid steer loader with attachment. We received bids on January 27th for the purchase of a skid steer, which was in the approved capital budget. We obtained six bids for that skid steer loader, we did demo the Bobcat from Spiegelberg, Wyoming, and we are recommending the award of that contract for the purchase of that to Spiegelberg Implement, in the amount of $41,980. We budgeted $50,000, $25,000 out of the general fund, and $25,000 out of the water fund, which the $41,980 would be under budget then.
Awesome. So you're looking for a motion to approve your recommendation?
Correct.
Anybody?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution that John can buy the skid steer for $41,980.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Mayo, that we approve the purchase of a Bobcat S590 from Spiegelberg of Wyoming, Wisconsin, in the amount of $41,980, to be split between, evenly between the general fund and, is that the, just the water fund?
Water fund.
Yep. Any discussion?
John, when is, when is delivery, and what type of warranty comes with it?
Delivery is middle of March, so the warranty is a 36-month protection and 3,000 hours. So basically, three-year warranty.
Awesome. Anybody else? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item, item 9C, is a sewer use ordinance, municipal code chapter 1302 update. I have a memo in your packet on this. Our municipal, our sewer use ordinance was written in 1995, I would think probably updated at the time of our eight million dollar expansion. It was then reviewed and updated in 2005, so it's been 10 years now. And with the most recent revisions to the Channel Lake Sanitary District Waste Treatment Service Agreement, we have done, again, another cost of service study, and that deals with all the items in that service agreement with the sanitary district, and how we bill out for high-strength waste. We do surcharge our heavy industrial users in the city on a monthly basis, based on the strength of their waste, we test their waste and charge them for that. We had, we had several companies before Churney left, we still have other businesses that we surcharge for the high-strength waste. And with the revisions to the sewer use ordinance, we'll be able to update those rates as well. And again, this, a cost of service study really allows us to recapture the cost to actually treat that high-strength waste, whether it's solids, whether it's oxygen demand, phosphorus, whatever they're providing to us, so. And with the other work that Kemfer, that Kemfer has done with the sanitary district agreement, I want to go back now and modify our sewer use ordinance, and update terminology, update, incorporate aspects of the sewer use study, and modify again the cost of service study, so our billable rates are current, and we're recapturing our costs at that time. So I asked for a proposal from Kemfer, and again, due to the nature of the work that they've done with us in these areas, I think this is really our best value versus trying to start over with another consultant. The contract would be on a time and expense basis not to exceed $7,900. I work, you know, hand in hand with Taran on this, and it works very well, and is very efficient in that manner, and we can keep our costs down by doing that as well, so. Again, this would be updating our entire sewer use ordinance, chapter 1302.
Anybody have any questions? Motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So John, if it's a time and use basis, if it comes under $7,900, is that-
Yes.
That's the bill then?
That's correct. If they, if they use $5,000 worth of expenses, that would be it.
All right.
Anybody else?
This is split with Channel Lakes? Is that what you said? No, this is, we're updating our municipal code, this certain chapter of our code, but we're taking advantage of the recent Channel Lake Sanitary District Agreement, and all that was incorporated in that agreement, we're taking advantage of that and implementing that back into our code, as well as updating our code. These costs are fully bearred by the city? That's correct.
Which would be by the enterprise fund, the sewer fund though?
Yes.
Right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion for approval? Second?
A motion by Hagan, second by Lockwood, that we approve of the engineering service proposal for sewer use, for ordinance municipal code chapter 13.02, to Kemfer and Associates on a time and expense basis not to exceed $7,900. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next item is 9C, or 9D, I'm sorry, City Railroad Spur and Side Rail Work. I have a memo in your packet in regards to this as well, there is a kind of a crude map, I apologize, that is the railroads map that we used for this. But the city constructed in 1997, a railroad spur that was radial to the, to the main line, it feeds Torburg Lumber, Napex Salvage, so it was perpendicular to the rail line. And then in 98, with work on the construction of Went Drive, the city installed sanitary sewer main, water main, and then contracted for road construction to create Went Drive. And with that new crossing, a side rail was extended from an existing intersection there. So on the map, on the second page of the memo, it shows sections B to F would be the spur, the perpendicular spur from the main line, and sections B to D would be the side rail, called a side rail. Again, these are city-owned rail sections that are utilized. The railroad does inspection of those rail lines periodically, using x-ray and visual inspections, and we have in the past made repairs to that spur line and side rail as needed. And the most recent inspections were done in May and October with Canadian National, and there was a, a report prepared by Canadian National on some work that was needed on the side rail and spur. So again, this is what I would consider routine maintenance, we do have a split rail in one of these sections, and there's some tie work and other items that are needed at this time. To do work on the side rail requires Canadian National flagmen, they're required to be out there, they don't stop the main line, they stop the work on the side rail, so the main line track can, things can go through. So that would be in addition to this, but we did go out and receive two quotes from two different firms that we've worked with in the past, there are only six contractors that are even allowed to work by the Canadian National, in the vicinity of their tracks or in their right-of-way. The following quotes were received, Railworks of Green Bay, for a total base bid, or total bid of $20,850, and Volkman from Menominee Falls of $26,694. I would recommend that this work do proceed, this work was proposed to be completed in 2014, at the request of Canadian National, however, the city did request that be continued or extended until the spring or summer of 2015. And they agreed with that, and supported that. And I would recommend that this work be awarded to Railworks, the low bidder, and that those, that project be funded out of TIF III funds.
John, and make sure that council does understand too, that this was a budgeted item, so this dollar, well, $25,000 I actually think was put in the budget for this project. So this dollar, well, 25,000, I actually think was put in the budget for this project. So this is not something unexpected. All right, any questions? Anybody that'd like to make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Mayo, that the council approve of the rail repair work and be awarded to Railroad Track Systems of Green Bay, Wisconsin, for the amount not to exceed 20,850 with the contract and the associated CN flagmen. This is, would be invoiced out of TIF number three funds. Any discussion?
John, do we have any idea what a flagman's going to cost?
I, I don't know offhand. I, I don't-
Is it thousands or is it, you know, having-
Yeah, a couple thousand probably. It looks like this work could probably be done in maybe two days. It depends on how much interference they have with main line traffic. They will have to stop and I don't know exactly what equipment, if they have to move equipment or what at that time, but it's, they, they won't stop the main line for it. But I would think it'd be a couple thousand dollar range.
I was just curious because we're, you know, we have the 20,000 bid, but it could be substantially more than that.
Yeah, we have, we've worked with them in the past and we've received bills probably in a couple thousand dollar range in the past.
So we're probably going to be inside our budget anyway, hopefully?
I would think so. I think so.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Deb Fensky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
The last item, mayor, is informational. I just wanted to let the council know, and I probably have talked about this a little bit, but we're required to prepare a compliance management operation, I'm sorry, capacity management, operation and maintenance program for our sanitary sewer collection system. So it's really an operation and maintenance manual. It goes through a number of different things that we already have in place. It creates new policies and procedures and it's a, it's a bible for the operation and maintenance of our collection system. We're required to have an approved program and plan by August of 2016. So I am putting together requests for proposals for assistance with a consultant on that. I think that this will go, go pretty well. It'll take a lot of our time and effort in collecting data that we have. And there's actually 10 steps that we have to work through on these documents. The consultant will help us put those together. They'll, there's a number of firms that are doing these now, so I think it's going to go rather quickly and we'll be of great assistance to get this done for us. So I just want to let the council know this will be funded out of our sewer fund and would be funded out of consultant services in the sewer fund. I don't know where the prices are going to come in at this point, but we'll go out for proposals and I'll be back at the council then to evaluate those.
Okay. Any questions on that? If not, we have license report number 1263, which is on the last page, some page 71 of your packet. There's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, six names for new operators license. You're looking for a motion to approve those operators license.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve of license report number 1263. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, communications recommendations of the mayor. Aaron, you want to just touch on your busy weekend?
Yeah, thank you. As you guys know, we have Winter Rec Fest this weekend. That begins at 2 o'clock. Looks like it might snow Saturday morning, so we're pretty excited about that. We have basically sledding, snowshoe hikes, family games, a recognition ceremony starting at 5:30 that you guys are invited to, fireworks at dusk, and then we'll continue till 8 o'clock with the sledding and some games as people hang around. We also have concessions with a tent, a warming tent and soup and chilis and things like that will be served. So looking forward to seeing you all there and I'm, I'm hoping we get good weather.
Thanks. Anybody else?
For bad weather.
Running.
Mayor, I just want to give a quick update to the council. I'll put in my report in two weeks, but late December, we had requested the council send out letters for the community development block grant. It has been determined with new information that we will not be sending out surveys. Actually, our LMI has increased from 49 and a half to about 61. So the requirement to actually send out the surveys randomly, as it appears right now, is not going to have to happen. So still moving forward on that, not saying that's the best news in the, in the state of, you know, the economic side of it, but from the standpoint of applying for the grant, it looks like we qualify now for potential for those development grant monies. So we'll be moving forward on that grant application, which is due in May of this year.
All right. Yeah, you're right. It's good news, but it's bad news. But yeah, at least we don't have to go door to door, which we thought we might have to. Anybody else have anything good of the meeting, anything they'd like to bring up? If not, looking for a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Lockwood, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, February 17, 2015 at 6:00 p.m., subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 6:38 p.m. Thank you, everyone, for watching, attending. Drive safely.